Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, January ninth, twenty twenty-four, meeting to order. Ms. Stanger, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Stewart?
Here.
Ms. Stewart?
Pastor Hathaway, would you lead us in the invocation and pledge, please?
Sure. Would you bow at me? Our Father and our God, how grateful we are to be blessed to live in this community, a community that shares the commitment to make us even greater. We thank you for the leaders who have served us this year. We thank you that in this opening session, God, that you would have your way. We pray that our leaders would lead with strength and integrity, with compassion to serve our community, and with the foresight to make decisions that benefit all of our community. Bless each member, Lord God, with discernment and unity, fostering an environment, Lord God, of celebrating the things that we can do together. We pray you'd bless their families. We're grateful for their service. We bless those that they lead, and we pray that we would lead in partnership, and that you would get all the praise, the glory, and honor. In thy name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Hathaway. Welcome, everyone, this evening to our reorganization meeting, the first meeting of the year. Before we get started, I would like to make a statement and a motion. As you all know, Ms. Amy Pearson was unanimously appointed to fill a vacancy left after Ms. Page's passing. Both Mr. Steers and I voted to appoint her. Ms. Pearson is exceptionally qualified to serve on this board. She is the Chief Financial Officer for a statewide agency that serves all of Virginia. For nine years, she was the Assistant Director of Financial Services for New Kent County. She earned a Master's Degree in Public Administration from Virginia Tech and a Bachelor's Degree in Accountant from Christopher Newport University. Amy has lived in the county for twenty-one years and is well-known for her public service to the county and the Commonwealth. Amy served as the Chief Election Officer for New Kent. She has served on the Board of Equalization and the Planning Commission for New Kent. In these roles, she was appointed and reappointed again by the late Patricia Page, and they shared a special friendship. Ms. Page would be proud of Amy and would support her as a District Three representative. I have received many calls and texts from community leaders and residents that live in the District Three who support Amy and believe she is the best person to represent their district. I agree with their assessment and wholeheartedly stand behind Amy's character, experience, and dedication to serve in New Kent County. There are forces outside this county that are attempting to control this county. We should send them a strong message that this county is not for sale. I will remind everyone that the Board already unanimously appointed Ms. Pearson to represent District Three just three weeks ago. Mr. Steers voted to appoint her? I voted to appoint her. Amy has not changed in the last three weeks. The facts have not changed in the last three weeks. If anything, she is an even stronger candidate now because she has begun her work as a board member. There is no reason why we shouldn't keep this exceptionally qualified person on this board, whose record of public service is outstanding. For these reasons, I move to appoint Amy Pearson to serve on the Board of Supervisors as its District Three representative with such a term of office effective immediately and ending when a duly-qualified successor is elected at the special election scheduled for November fifth, twenty twenty-four. Any discussion?
Oh, so yes, am I addressing you as the chair?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, firstly, I want to make it very clear that this is not a personal attack on Amy Pearson. She and I had our first conversation today, and I think it was a very good conversation. And I'm honestly a little frustrated that the previous board put us in a position and put Ms. Pearson in this position, but I feel like this is an attempt to rubber stamp the actions of the previous board that were clearly in violation of Virginia's law. And I'm going to categorize those into two sections. So, the facts as we know them to be today, and then my beliefs. So, hang with me. On November twenty-eighth, we learned of Ms. Page's passing. On November twenty-ninth, the county announced their intention to take applications until December fifteenth for an interim appointee to serve until the thirty-first of this year, twenty twenty-four. On December fourth of last year, the chairman of the previous board, our county administrator, and our county attorney received a letter from a nationally-recognized law firm articulating and advising that the process they intended to follow to appoint Ms. Pearson was not in compliance with the law. Then on December fifth, the board proceeded to submit a writ of special election to the judge, setting the special election for November fifth of this year. The judge signed and entered that on the same day. And, Mr. Chair, on December eleventh, the county announced it would hold a special session on the eighteenth to make said appointment. On December thirteenth, the chair, Mr. Tiller at the time, the county administrator, and county attorney, received a letter from our Deputy Attorney General advising that the Attorney General believed that the process intended to be carried out was in violation of Virginia's law. On December eighteenth, the previous board held that special session, went into closed session, and selected Ms. Pearson to fill the vacancy. On December twenty-first, the Attorney General issued his official opinion publicly available on his website stating that that board had in fact violated the law. And then on January fifth of this year, the Deputy Attorney General wrote again to the county administrator and the county attorney stating that the appointment process had violated the law. So, I reiterate, this is not personal, and I believe this is an attempt to ask us to rubber stamp this improper process. And I think that we, as the current board, have an opportunity to proceed openly and in accordance with the law. And I know at about two o'clock yesterday, Mr. Hathaway sent Mr. Moyer and myself the applications for the previous applicants, and I appreciate the opportunity to review those, but that doesn't change that the process was done improperly the first time. And the best way to avoid compounding the illegal action is to start the process over. We have about thirty-five days as of today to get it right. Our registrar did confirm that we can have a special election in April of this year and make sure that the people can exercise their ability to pick their person. You know, transparency is of utmost importance here at our local level, and I know the critics of this process will say we have to prioritize expediency over citizen engagement and participation, but I don't believe that making this decision in the dark of the night or behind closed doors like it was done by the previous board is in the best interest of our citizens or the county. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. As Ms. Stewart just alluded to, I have three copies here of emails sent from the Commonwealth or from the Attorney General, and pretty much he said exactly what Ms. Stewart just said. It's not the person we selected, it's the process we used. And like she just said, until late yesterday afternoon, she has not even seen the applicants that applied for this position. So, it's kind of like excluding any input from her. Same thing for Mr. Moyer. Now, I do know he probably has a little more insight into a person because he has served on the Planning Commission. Just like Thomas said, I fully support Amy. I think she's well-qualified. Everything that you just said, Mr. Chairman, I totally agree with. She's qualified. I think we're going about in the wrong way. And if we get sued, we're going to prison, and I don't think anybody's going to bring us donuts on Sunday. I really don't. But, the thing about it, I have another option that I thought would be more viable. This would get the Attorney General off our backs, and that is to allow our two new supervisors to review the applicants until two weeks from today or two weeks to our next work session, and let them interview, let them make phone calls, let them do their research, so that it's equitable to all of us. And then, at our work session, we will vote on who will be the new supervisor. I think we can have an early election as soon as, if I'm not mistaken, April. Is that right, Ms. Stewart? We could possibly have an election in April, and then it would be just for that district. It would cost in the neighborhood of about ten thousand dollars, but I think it's worth it for the citizens of District Three to be totally represented by the person that they want them representing them. That's just my opinion.
Any other comment? There's a motion on the floor. Ms. Stanger, will you poll the members?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
I abstain due to a conflict of interest. The nature of the conflict of interest is the subject of this vote, is my seat on the board.
Mr. Steers?
Nay.
Ms. Stewart?
Nay.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, as it was a two-two vote, the vote fails. And given these unusual circumstances, I would like to make a statement. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, and fellow citizens of New Kent County, both here in the gallery today and those watching at home. Ms. Pearson was appointed on December eighteenth to fill the vacancy left after Ms. Page's passing. Ms. Pearson swore her oath and was duly bonded and qualified. Her appointment was effective immediately. This appointment was done pursuant to Virginia Code Section twenty-four point two dash two twenty-eight A, which reads that such an appointed person will serve, and quote, "until the qualified voters fill the vacancy by special election pursuant to Section twenty-four point two dash six eighty-two, and the person so elected has qualified. Any person so appointed shall hold office the same as an elected person and shall exercise all powers of the elected office." This code section is consistent with hundreds of years of common law in Virginia, including the nineteen sixty-nine Report of the Commission on Constitutional Revision, which was headed by former Governor and Virginia Supreme Court Justice Albertus S. Harrison, Jr., McCulloch's Virginia Constitutional Law, Judge John Forrest Dillon's Commentaries on the Law of Municipal Corporations, written by the very same Judge Dillon that created Dillon's Rule. You may be familiar with that rule, Mickey's Jurisprudence, American Jurisprudence, Corpus Juris Secundum Legal Encyclopedia, an Attorney General Opinion from May fifth, nineteen eighty-one, an Attorney General Opinion from July twelfth, nineteen eighty-five, an Attorney General Opinion from August thirty-one, nineteen eighty-eight, Black's Law Dictionary, and the Virginia County Supervisor's Manual on page two forty-four, published by the Virginia Association of Counties. Each board member was issued a copy of this manual. These legal authorities are consistent with my experience, serving four counties, three cities, four towns, in my career as a local government attorney. It is also the experience of all my brothers and sisters who serve as chief legal officers to counties, cities, towns, and political subdivisions throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. This is also consistent with the alluded to Attorney General's recent opinion. Mr. Mier's conclusion reads that, quote, "An individual appointed to a local governing body to fill a vacancy pursuant to Code Section twenty-four point two dash two twenty-eight may remain an interim appointment in said office until such time as a majority of the remaining members of the body vote on an appointment for the new term of office." No person has yet been appointed by a majority of the remaining members of this board for this term. Therefore, until the board appoints an interim board member for this term, or until the results of the election on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, Ms. Pearson has full authority under Virginia law to serve as the District Three Supervisor. I would like to add one other comment. There's been talk of moving the election date. Unfortunately, that's not a possibility anymore. The second that Ms. Page passed, there was a countdown, and that's pursuant to Code Section twenty-four point two dash two twenty-six A. Yours truly, the county attorney, had fifteen days from that day to file a petition with the Circuit Court. That petition was granted by the court on that very same day. There's a hearing next Tuesday, December sixteenth, one P. M. at the Circuit Court. If you go across the parking lot into the large brick building with the white columns out front, you go through security, don't bring your phone, don't bring any weapons, you take a left, you can view it. Until a court of competent jurisdiction overturns that writ of election, the election will be held on November fifth. Until a court of competent jurisdiction undoes all of the legal authorities that I have just spoken, Ms. Pearson is a full member of this board. Thank you.
I will move on to the organization of the board. I'll turn it over to our county administrator, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. At this time, the floor will be open for nominations for the position of Chair to serve for the calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Hathaway, I'd like to nominate Thomas Evelyn for Chair of the Board of Supervisors for the term of one year.
Thank you, Ms. Moyer. We have a nomination for the position of Chair. At this time, we can consider other nominations, or we can close the nominations. And that would need a motion as well.
Mr. Evelyn, I'll move to close the nominations.
Okay. Thank you. Motion has been made to close the nominations for the position of Chair. Ms. Stanger, will you poll the members?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Abstain.
All right. At this time, we will open the floor for motions to elect the Chairman.
Oh, elect Chairman.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to elect the Chairman as Thomas Evelyn. Yep.
Robert's rules. No, this is still for Chair.
I move to elect Thomas Evelyn as Chair of the Board of Supervisors for the term of one year.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. There's no other motions. Ms. Stanger, will you poll the members?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Abstain.
And Mr. Moyer?
Aye. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank my fellow board members, and, you know, I'd like to welcome the new board members to the board. Looking forward to getting through this first hurdle, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we can get this issue resolved and start doing what the citizens of this county elected us to do. With that, I'll open the nominations for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman?
Chairman?
Ms. Pearson?
I nominate Ron Steers for Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors for the term of one year.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Any other nominations? If not, I'll close the nominations.
I'd move to close the nominations for the Vice-
I need to make up. We need to vote on.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Ms. Stanger, will you poll the members?
Mr. Steers?
Aye. I'm a little frustrated. Sorry about that.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Motion to close the nomination?
I move to close the nominations for Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Ms. Stanger, will you poll the members?
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye. I would also like to thank my fellow board members for having trusted me to be the Vice Chairman. I hope the Chairman does a good job. And I look forward to serving the people of New Kent County, and I appreciate all your support. Thank you so much.
We got a lecture first.
I move to elect Ron Steers as Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors for the term of one year.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Ms. Stanger, will you poll the members?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Abstain.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Ms. Steers. Congratulations. Next item is the consent agenda. Ah, clerk, I'm sorry. It's been a while. Is there a motion to elect Clerk and Deputy Clerk?
I move to elect Rodney A. Hathaway as Clerk of the Board and Wanda F. Watkins as Deputy Clerk of the Board, each to serve a term of one year.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Is there any discussion? None. Ms. Stanger, poll the members, please.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Next, we have to adopt our meeting schedule. Does anyone? Does anybody have any issues with some of these dates?
No. I don't know if you guys just heard, but Nick Saban just retired. I don't know if you knew that.
When he take a recess?
Having a memorial service.
Mr. Evelyn, I got one on March twenty-sixth, our work session, that I would not be able to attend. But everything else is good?
You got a suggested date to, you know?
That's Holy Week or probably Spring Break Week for us, so the week before, the week after, be fine with me.
So, the twenty-sixth, the nineteenth, does anybody have any issues with the nineteenth? Eighteenth?
No.
No. All right. All right, so that's one change. So, we'll move our March twenty-sixth to I have one issued date problem as well. The May thirteenth meeting? Yeah, my son's graduating from college, I hope. Could we move that up to? The first Monday of the sixth, May sixth? Anybody have any issues with that? Does anybody else have any other conflicts? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution R dash, is that the right one?
Yep.
R dash zero one dash twenty-four with the following changes. The work session on March twenty-sixth will now be on March nineteenth. The work session on March twenty-sixth will now be on March nineteenth and the business meeting on May thirteenth will now be on May sixth.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson, is there any other discussion? Ms. Stanger, will you poll the members, please?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
All right. Next is the re- review and adoption of the bylaws. Are there any changes?
Mr. Chair, I have two questions-
Yes, ma'am.
On the bylaws, on page nine, under B and D, keep a written rec- the county administrator will keep a written record of all business transacted by the board. Can the county administrator just share how do we keep that written record and where is it stored? And then on-
That- that record is kept in- in the minutes.
Okay. And then advise and inform the board on all matters affecting county government. How do you do that?
Basically answer questions that you call, I keep you updated on county businesses. You'll be getting weekly reports from me every Friday just on county happenings and definitely I'll contact you on other matters that comes- comes up.
Thank you.
Well, we can't vote to adopt these, uh, we have to, less than thirty days for adoption of bylaws, right? Or since there are no changes-
No, that- that's only if- if there's changes, if there's no changes, we can.
So, assuming there's no changes? Look, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept that bylaws be adopted as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Steers, any other discussion? Now, Ms. Stanger, poll the members, please.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
How are we on the consent agenda? I know everyone's had a chance to look at it, are there any questions, comments, changes or concerns with the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, could you just verify whether or not the supplemental FY twenty-four supplemental appropriations are included in the consent agenda? Or not?
Yes.
Okay. So, do we need to pull those out if we want to have a discussion about that or what's the proper procedure?
If- if one member would like to pull an item from the consent agenda, they may just simply request that and then we pull it into, it wouldn't be a public hearing, it would just be other business, we could do it later. But the remainder of the consent agenda items that have not been pulled out would be, would remain part of the consent agenda and passed as one, so if there's a motion to adopt the consent agenda, it would be a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item, whatever the item was.
Okay, follow-up question, is the public safety money that's in here, is that going to be addressed in public hearing under item number three?
Yes.
Then I'm good, thank you.
So, just to be clear, there was nothing to be pulled out? Okay.
Sure, Mr. Chair, I'll move to adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Any other comments, discussions? Ms. Stanger, poll the members, please.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Uh, next, we have the citizens' comment period. Bring the sign up sheet. Uh, I'd just like to remind everyone doing this citizens' comment period, please come up, when I call your name, please come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record and you will be given three minutes to speak. First person is Laura Ichimovich.
Good evening. Laura Ichimovich, six thousand Spring Run Drive, Quentin, Virginia, and I am a resident of District Three. Came tonight to thank the board for picking someone who is so duly qualified, although I guess I was a little disappointed in what transpired after that. Transparency, I believe this board was more transparent than any other board in any other appointment and I have seen a few other board members being appointed. Never have I even seen it put out to the floor for applications, the process was completely done and anything to the contrary is just wrong. There have been other issues throughout the county in which you have prided yourself, Mr. Steers, in going around and asking actual county residents who live there what their opinion is and I have not received or my neighbors any indication from any of you regarding what our thoughts were. I can tell you that I've spoken to many of my neighbors and residents of District Three who are very pleased with this appointment. We have a very qualified individual at the realm and there is no hurry. I want my chance for my vote to see who's going to run, but as a person who's run for office before, rushing it does not allow anybody the proper time to vet or even get out in the district for the rest of us to meet anybody or for them to have an opportunity to. So, rushing an election, I- I just don't see the hurry and charging the county an extra ten thousand, twelve thousand dollars when we can do it right in the November elections makes no sense to me. So, I thank the prior board for the appointment and thank you to the county attorney to clarify that Amy will serve until otherwise, well, hopefully, for until the next, till the election. And I would challenge to say that this board is fully responsible for any actions that are taken against us because you could have put that to bed tonight and that's just plain politics. We're all kind of tired of the politics and this board has the opportunity to represent the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Milton Hathaway?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm Reverend Dr. Milton Hathaway, I live in District Three, nine thousand one Cross Mill Road. My initial intent was to come just to congratulate the board, so let me do that, but let me hasten to say the election is over. With all due respect, I only want to hear from people in District Three about the representative that will represent us. I am a leader in District Three, not of black people, but of the community and this boardroom was jam-packed with residents from District Three on December eleventh. If necessary, we will do it every single meeting to make you understand that we have chosen the candidate that we want and that is Amy Pearson. The Code of Virginia says that local governments can only do what they are authorized to do by the code. The code clearly says that this board may fill the position. The legal definition of may says that they have permission and they are authorized, but they are not obligated to. The vacancy occurred under the current board, under the last board. The code says if there is a majority remaining on that board, that board has the authority to fill the position. There clearly was a majority there. I am frustrated that the Commonwealth attorney does not contact us and so it makes me wonder who is he representing because his hope was to represent all of New Kent and all of the Commonwealth of Virginia. I am concerned that our legislators in the General Assembly have not weighed in and- and asked the residents of District Three who they want. We clearly have chosen the candidate that we believe is the best candidate to represent District Three and we don't appreciate any other district making that choice for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Hathaway. Ron Bingham? Leslie Trivett?
I'm Leslie Trivett. I was going to speak about the need for a roundabout at New Kent Highway in Henpeck. I might have time for that or I might come back and discuss it next month. I'm not a lawyer, I had a decent education and I thoroughly read the opinions of the Attorney General and the Assistant Attorney General. I read the law. If I can see it, I think anybody else can see it, it was very clear, very easy to understand. The previous board had the right to make an appointment that ended last year. The new board has the right to make an appointment beginning this year. I think the vote that was taken today was the right thing to do under law. I know everybody has a lot of passion about who they want to be, their representative, and that's understandable. I have nothing to say about Ms. Pearson one way or another because I don't know her, I'm not in her district and I will be not voting in that election. I believe the board did the right thing tonight and I believe New Kent followed the law and I believe that we avoided unnecessary litigation and possible financial detriment to our county. So, thank you all for doing the right thing. I hope we can come together in a spirit of goodwill for the next election and the people of the district will vote for their representative at that time. Thank you.
Last person signed up, I'll close the citizens' comment period. Uh, next is the residency administrator's report. Mr. Nguyen? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Marshall Nguyen with VDOT. This past month, we received eighty-five work orders, completed eighty-four, had nine callouts, doing the same type of maintenance work, grading on hard surface roads, shoulder and ditching repairs and that sort, pipe replacement and cleaning, tree removal and cleanup, sign replacement and trash pickup. I'm- I'm sure you know, the past month, we've been inundated with rain. Our crews worked last weekend with snow and this weekend, they work with rain. My- my crews worked yesterday, last night, all day today. We got more work to do, we've been working with Dominion Power to get power lines, you know, out of the way and trees out of the way. Got a little ways to go, I think tomorrow will be clear. As I remember, the only road we really have closed is six oh six Shaw City Road, right at the county line. Water came over the bridge and I have to wait for the bridge office to do an inspection. I can't just open it up, there might be something that affected the sub- the abutments or the beams or anything, but I'm hoping to get that information tomorrow where we can open that completely. Other than that, I don't have anything else, now unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen, I know you've had your hands full with all this rain in the last- last week or so. Ms. Stewart, do you have any? Thank you, Mr. Nguyen.
I'm good, thank you, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Mr. Steers?
No, I don't have anything, thank you, sir.
Okay. Ms. Pearson?
Nice to meet you, Mr. Nguyen, and thank you for all your hard work over the last day or so. I did have a call from one of my citizens today. It has to do with the curve on two forty-nine, right before you hit Kentland Road. I did drive out there and I- I can understand their concerns. There's a curve right there and it's fifty-five miles per hour. Not every citizen goes fifty-five mi- miles per hour.
No doubt, no doubt.
And there's elderly people in that neighborhood and I don't know what needs to be done, a sign or something. The residents offered to pay for the sign, to put something-
You said it was two forty-nine and-
Two forty-nine and Kentland Road, or Ken- Ken Hurst Road, sorry.
Kentland Trail is off of one fifty-five.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Ken Hurst Road.
Okay, okay.
Okay, if you'll take a look at that.
Yes, ma'am.
He said he's been calling about it for three years and so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moyer?
Mr. Nguyen, good to see you again. As I mentioned before, I appreciate your gentleman that came to the meeting today for transportation meeting and one of the things that was talked about there was, Ms. Trivett mentioned, was roundabouts, one at Dispatch and two forty-nine and also one maybe at Henpeck and two forty-nine. Those are concerns that have been talked about from this dice for a long time and we love to see a study at least, if it could be done for each of those places. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for everything you do.
All right, thank you very much.
I was in a meeting this week with Cox and I just, I don't know if you know the answer to this Cox Communications, so they're, you know, they're running fiber down Townsville, you know, my district and Ms. Stewart's district. Does VDOT, they said they couldn't work over Christmas because VDOT shut the right-of-way down and they weren't able to- to put fiber down. I mean, I saw, I told them that I saw the Virginia Natural Gas working in the easement, so, I mean-
There's only certain dates that they can't work, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, there's a handful of them in their handbook.
But not like two weeks off?
No, they- they probably took off and had vacation that, those two weeks, if you want to know the truth.
Well, for a communication company, they're very, it's been very frustrating. I didn't think-
I mean, I know- I know we have a, there's gotta be a permit for that work through my permit office, so.
Yeah.
It's- it's not that we told them they couldn't work, okay?
I knew that, but I just wanted to hear it from you.
All right.
Publicly. Thank you.
All right, y'all have a good one. Bye-bye.
We do have some appointment stuff, but I'm gonna take a five-minute break and be back here at, let's get back here at ten minutes seven and we'll do the appointments and then go to public hearing. Call the bean back to order. It's not seven o'clock yet, so we can't get into our public hearing, so we'll get into appointments. We'll do appointments by district. Start with Ms. Stewart.
Mr. Chair, I have two appointments, one to the Social Services Advisory Board, Harold Kaufman, and one to the Housing Advisory Commission, Mr. Chuck Ward.
That's, I think they're, they're.
It's just your own district.
I think they're regional, that they're.
Not designated by district.
Yeah. So, you have the Airport Advisory and the Purchase of Development Rights?
Right.
Then I guess I have none.
Ms. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Russell Byer as District Four Representative to the Board of Zoning Appeals to serve a five-year term, beginning January 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2028, and that's it.
Pearson?
I move to appoint Reverend Milton Hathaway as a District Three Representative to the Planning Commission to complete a four-term, four-year term, ending December 31, 2024. And I move to reappoint William Woodson as a District Three Representative to the Transportation Safety Commission to serve a four-year term, beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2027. Thank you.
Mr. Moyor?
I'll be here a little while. I move to reappoint Wayne T. Marks as District Two Representative to the Agriculture and Forestry Bureau District Advisory Committee to serve a four-year term, beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2027. Also, I move to appoint Yvonne Robinson as District Two Representative to the Clean County Committee to serve a four-year term, beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2027. Also, I move to appoint Tammy L. Johnson as a District Two Representative to the Planning Commission to complete a four-year term, ending December 31, 2024. Also, I move to appoint Jacob Dombrosky, a, as a District Two Representative to the Planning Commission to complete a four-year term, ending December 31, 2026. Also, move to appoint Robert Gray as a District Two Representative to the Purchase of Development Rights Committee to complete a term ending June 30, 2024. Also, reappoint Charles Edwards as a District Two Representative to the Board of Road Viewers to serve a four-year term, beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2027. And a new one, I move to appoint Pete Sweet as a District Two Representative to the Steering Committee for the Update of the Comprehensive Plan for a term from January 1, 2024 until that process is over.
I do not have any, so, Ms. Stanger, will you call the roll on the appointments delegated by district?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Moyor?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Next, we have appointments not delegated by district.
Ms. Stewart?
Are you purposely starting with me, Mr. Chair?
You're doing better than I did in my first meeting. You're fine.
Well, I move to appoint Chuck Ward as a Representative to the Housing Advisory Committee, and that's all I've got.
Ms. Steers?
Oh, I have none.
Ms. Pearson?
I move to reappoint WR Ray Davis Jr. as a member of the Farms of New Kent Community Development Authority Board to serve a four-year term, beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2027. I move to appoint Andy Shawn as a Representative to the Housing Advisory Committee. And I move to appoint Bill Dismore as a Representative to the Housing Advisory Committee. Moving right along, I understand that the Youth Community Service Committee has been a little dormant, and I am excited to try to revitalize that, so I have three appointments for that. I move to appoint Mackenzie Gray as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one-year term, ending December 31, 2024. I move to appoint Natalie Robinson as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one, a one-year term, ending December 31, 2024. I move to appoint Camden Jones as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one-year term, ending December 31, 2024. Okay, and that's all I have, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Moyor.
Yes, I move to appoint Elizabeth Remarenko, Housing Advisory Committee, to the Housing Advisory Committee. Also, I'd like to move to appoint Jeremy Nistley as Representative to the Housing Advisory Committee. And also, I move to appoint Kinsley Parrish as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one-year term, ending December 31, 2024.
Thank you. I move to appoint Wayne Lee as Representative to the Housing Advisory Committee. That's all we have, so, Ms. Stanger, will you call the vote on appointments not delegated by district, please?
Mr. Moyor?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next, we have appointments of regional boards and commissions. And just gotta go through these. If anybody has any ones that they are, jump on them.
I move to appoint John Moyor as New Kent's, oh, as New Kent's Board Representative to the Central Virginia Transportation Authority to serve a one-year term, beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024. I also, I also move to appoint Jordan Stewart as New Kent's Board Representative to the Plan RBA, Regional Planning District Commission, to serve a four-year term, beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2027.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, I move to appoint Amy Pearson as the New Kent's Board's alternate Representative to the Plan RBA Regional Planning District Commission to serve a four-year term, beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2027.
This is why, this is why I need my paper copy, because I can't, I don't know what's left. Does anybody have anything that they, before we get going, does anybody have anything that they really want to be on? Ms. Pearson said you wouldn't be on the Clean County?
But that's the next one. That's the next group, I guess.
All right, we'll go to, you want to do the plan? I think you're a great fit for that, unless somebody else really wants it.
We have a representative on the planning.
Tommy's gone.
Tommy's here.
Ms. Stewart? We have, that's, these are just, we're not, we're on regional, we're on regional boards.
Yeah, that's fine.
But we still have some on the regional boards, right? You gotta have, we have, we need the Capital Region Policy Board.
Right.
Does anybody have any desire with?
I'll do it.
All right, I move to appoint John Moyor as New Kent's Board Representative to the Capital Region Policy Board to serve a one-year term, beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024.
And I move to point Rodney Hathaway as New Kent's Alternative Appointed to the Capital Regional Policy Board to serve a one-year term, beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024.
And I also like to appoint Amy Pearson as a New Kent's Alternate Member to the Central Virginia Transportation Authority to serve a one-year term, beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024.
And I think that's.
The other. No, it's a District Five Representative.
Let's, Ms. Stewart has to point that.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine. So, that's, we have, Ms. Stewart's gonna be on the Plan RBA, and Ms. Pearson, you're the alternate, so that's.
No, they are, are TPO.
Thrive Virginia? That was, we had a citizen's on that. Maybe if we, maybe we can reach out to somebody, it's between all of us. You want to leave that open for the time being?
Sure.
Regional, Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization?
Okay, I move to appoint John Moyor as New Kent's Appointed to the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization Policy Board to serve a four-year term, beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2027. Okay, and I move to appoint Jordan Stewart as New Kent's Alternate Appointed to the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization Executive Board to serve a four-year term, beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2027.
All right, that's.
I think that's it.
That's. All right, that's it.
That's the Richmond Region Tourism Board of Directors. We do need an appointment for that. That term expires 12/31/2026. Previously, Mrs. Page filled that seat.
I move to appoint Jordan Stewart to that board. Sorry.
Richmond Regional Tourism, Richmond Regional Tourism Board.
Richmond Regional Tourist Board. For, like, one year? Through 12/31/26.
Thank you. I'll go down.
Central Virginia Waste Management. Did we do that one? No, we did not. That is another term that, that position was filled by Mr. Lockwood, and that expired 12/31/26. Again, that's Central Virginia. Again, that's Central Virginia Waste Management Authority. 12/31/26. Um, well, currently, we did that, uh, Mr. Lockwood was the alternate and, um, the General Services Director was the main. It doesn't have to be that way. I will serve as the main, um, and if you.
I think she said she'll do it.
I'd like to be the main.
All right, I move to appoint Jordan Stewart to the Central Virginia Waste Management, uh, for a term ending January 31st, 26. Anybody want to, we need an alternate too, right?
I see, does that end January 1, January 31, 26, or December?
December 31, 26. And we need an alternate, right?
If you appoint me as alternate, I can fill in when Mrs. Stewart is not available.
I move to point Rodney Hathaway as alternate to the Central Virginia Waste Management Authority and term ending 12/31/26. All right, I think that is it. Ms. Stanger, will you poll the board, please?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
All right, let's see if we can make it smooth again. Uh, appointments of the boards, uh, of board and staff appointments. We just kind of go right down on if that's okay with everybody. Uh, the first is the Agriculture and Forestry District.
I move to appoint Ron Steers as Board Representative to the Agricultural and Forestry District Advisory Committee to serve a one-year term beginning January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2024.
I move to appoint Ron Steers as the Board Representative to the Airport Advisory Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2024.
I move to.
Go ahead.
I, I move to appoint Amy Pearson as the Board Representative to the Clean County Committee to serve a one-year term beginning January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2024.
Historic Commission?
I move to appoint John Moyer as Board Representative to the Historic Commission to serve a one-year term through December 31st, 2024.
I'm done with that.
I move to appoint Thomas Evelyn as Board Representative to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission to serve a one-year term through December 31st, 2024.
Do we, we got a point planned again? Oh, okay, okay.
I move to appoint John Moyer as Board Representative to the Planning Commission to serve a one-year term ending on December 31st, 2024.
Social Services Advisory Board?
I move to appoint Jordan Stewart as the Board Representative to the Social Services Advisory Board to serve a one-year term beginning January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2024.
Transportation Safety Commission, Ms. Stewart?
I move to appoint Ron Steers as Board Representative to the Transportation Safety Commission to serve a one-year term ending on December 31st, 2024.
All right, that's all. So, Ms. Stanger, will you call the vote for the board and staff appointments, please?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Next, we need to appoint the Director and Coordinator of Emergency Services. Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I move to appoint Thomas Evelyn as the Director of Emergency Management pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section 44-146-19, and as Director of Emergency Services and Emergency Services pursuant to County Code, Chapter 30-161.
We need to vote on this, so, uh, so we need to vote on the Director of Emergency Management. Uh, there's a motion. Ms. Stanger, will you poll the members, please?
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Stanger.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Now, I move to appoint Chief, Fire Chief Rico Pett as Coordinator of Emergency Management pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section 44-146.19, and as Coordinator of Emergency Services pursuant to County Code, Chapter 30-162. Any further discussion? Ms. Stanger, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan, Ms. Stewart, excuse me.
Aye.
All right, so, gotten all that done. Uh, it's after seven o'clock, so we can get into our public's, public hearing. Our first public hearing tonight on the, uh, Polish Town Solar has been deferred by the applicant. Uh, our next, uh, uh, public hearing is Ordinance O-01-24, Proposed Amendments to the New Kent County Code, Section 66-330 in regard to business professional occupation license standards by populations. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. You have Ordinance O-1-24 before you to amend Chapter 66, Sections 330B1 and 330B2, which covers the amount of B-Pole tax applied to contractors and retail sales. At our December 2023 meeting, you adopted Ordinance O-17-23, which involved significant amendments to the B-Pole tax in order to be in compliance with state regulations for localities that exceed a population of 25,000. One of the changes made in December involved the gross receipts threshold at which fees and taxes were applied. Previously, if gross receipts were less than $10,000, a $30 license fee was applied. Above $10,000, a tax was applied in an amount based on the type of business. In December, the BPO, BPOL, uh, requirements were amended to remove the $30 license fee for gross receipts, um, for less than $10,000 and to charge a $50 license fee for gross receipts between $10,000 and $1 to $50,000. And, uh, the applicable B-Pole tax will now be applied to businesses with gross receipts above $50,000. The ordinance that was adopted last month included the $30 license fee for contractors and retail sales, which should have been removed as incorporated in the ordinance that you have before you today for consideration. Section A, which is not shown in the ordinance that you have before you, but was adopted in December, um, outlines the license fee, again, which is between $10,000 and $50,000. And Section B, which you have before you, is the actual tax, which is applied for gross receipts above $50,000. Again, um, the proposed changes that you have before you did not get included into the ordinance from adopted last month, but it removes the $30 minimum license fee. That fee is now zero.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you.
I'll, uh, before we start, uh, does any board members have any questions or comments for Mr. Hathaway on this? Well, I'll open the public hearing. If anybody signed up to speak? No one signed up. I will close the public hearing. Any further comment, questions, concerns? Uh, will entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Pearson?
I move to adopt Ordinance O-01-24 to amend Sections 66-330B1 and 66-330B2 for compliance with the Virginia Code, B-Pole standards for localities that exceed a population of 25,000 residents.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Ms. Stanger, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed. Next public hearing tonight is FY 23-24 Budget Amendment, Resolution R-03-24. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The proposed budget amendment that you have before you, uh, totals $1,317,065. Of that amount, $701,175.65 will go towards the hiring, training, and equipping of 18 new fire and rescue positions, uh, to staff, uh, Fire Station 6, uh, the new Bottoms Bridge Station that is, uh, planning to begin construction soon. Uh, there's also an additional $600,000, uh, that will go towards additional staffing and salary adjustments in the Sheriff's Office. Again, the total appropriation is $1,301,175.65. The reason for the public hearing today is because that amount is more than 1% of the adopted budget. Uh, therefore, state code requires a public hearing for that. Um, I do have before you, which was passed out, um, prior to the meeting, a revised resolution, Resolution R-3-24R1, uh, for your consideration. And this was passed out as an alternative, uh, to the original proposed funding source. The original proposed funding source was to use Colonial Downs funds, uh, to fund the $1.3 million. Um, but the revised that you received today would use, um, our fund balance, our general fund balance. Um, and the thinking behind this is, at the end of each fiscal year, there are additional funds left over. Actually, those additional funds are what goes into funding our capital improvements program. Those additional funds come from additional revenues, unspent budget items, um, just, just savings that, that we've received throughout the year. Um, our transfer has usually been, uh, several million dollars, some years, four or five million dollars. So, we feel comfortable, I feel comfortable, um, that our end-of-the-year fund balance will cover, uh, this amount that's proposed today.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you.
Uh, before we start, I'll, uh, open up the public hearing. Has anyone signed up? No one signed up, so I'll close the public hearing. Uh, any comment from questions, concerns for Mr. Hathaway, from board members?
I actually had a question for Mr. Hathaway.
Ms. Stewart?
You said you were comfortable that our end-of-year balance this year could cover it. What about the subsequent years?
Well, we're beginning our, our, our budget planning process right now. Uh, definitely, if this is adopted, there will be a commitment. And keep in mind, this only funds half a year. Um, so, we will have to identify funding, um, in the amount of $2.6 million for, for next year. Um, it's really kind of very early in our budget process, um, for me to tell you where that will come from, but we will make a commitment to, to fund that with adopting this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. And then a question for Ms. Pearson. Is this what we were talking about?
Anybody else? Now, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution R-3-24R1 to appropriate funds from fiscal year 2024 general fund balance in the following amounts. $701,175.65 to fund the hiring, training, and equipment, and equipment of 18 new fire and rescue positions. $600,000 for additional staffing and salary adjustments in the Sheriff's Office. The total fiscal year, fiscal year 2024 appropriation equals the sum of $1,301,175.65.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Any other comments, questions? Now, Ms. Stanger, will you poll the members, please?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Our last public hearing this evening is public hearing, Proposed Equalized, Equalized Real Property Tax Levy for Fiscal Year 2025 Budget, Ordinance O-02-24. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, we do have one amendment to this public hearing. Um, instead of Ordinance O-02-24, uh, you receive tonight Resolution R-4-24 with the same language and same action of adopting an equalized rate. But I would ask that you adopt the resolution, um, that is before you this afternoon. Um, 2023, uh, Commissioner of Revenues Office conducted reassessments, uh, throughout the county. Um, and they are required, the county is required by state code to equalize the rate and to show the equalized rate on, um, the bills that, that go out, or the notices that go out to, to our residents. Um, the results of the 2023 assessments, uh, we've seen a approximately 24% increase in total assessed values of real property, uh, throughout the county. Um, therefore, the equalized rate, um, and the rate is currently, for, for the public's knowledge, 67 cents per $100 of valuation. Uh, the equalized rate, uh, would be 57 cents per $100 of assessed value. Um, so that is the action today is to, uh, accept, uh, the, adopt the equalized rate of $57 per $100 of valuation. And you have a motion before you. For the general public, though, I, I, I want to limit confusion, uh, because we're just starting our budgeting process for FY 25. Um, and just because the action taken today, uh, will accept the equalized rate, that doesn't necessarily mean that will be the rate adopted with the budget. And right now, we're too early into the process to tell you if we can hold this equalized rate or there will have to be some change. But just want to put that out there to the public in case when we do adopt the budget or when I present the budget in a couple of months, um, and propose a different rate. Uh, just want to explain that.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. That means, you know, obviously, New Kent's fast-growing county and people want to be here. So, I mean, that's a good sign that property's value's going up, so.
Yeah.
Anybody, uh, I want to open the public hearing. Has anybody signed up? No one signed up. Uh, the board members have any comments for Mr. Hathaway?
I would just, um, reiterate that the equalized rate means that the new value of your home from the reassessment, um, at 57 cents equals your old value at 67 cents, basically. Um, I thought this would be a good time to mention that, um, and remind people that there is tax relief out there for real estate for the elderly and disabled, up to $1,600 as well. And that's all I have.
Well, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, yeah.
I move to adopt Resolution R-4-24 to approve the equalized real property tax rate of 57 cents per $100 of valuation effective for tax year beginning January 1st, 2024.
Ms. Pearson, uh, Ms. Stanger, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Out of this public hearings this evening, next, we have the elected officials' report. Let's start with you this time, Mr. Moyer.
My report is only that I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I expect to see you in the same seats next month. I don't know if it's going to be as exciting as tonight, but e- each month, whether you watch it on YouTube or you come here to, to see us conduct business, it means a lot to us to see your support. So appreciate that.
Ms. Pearson?
I'll do my appointed official, uh, report. I, I, I too, just appreciate everybody coming out. I, I did want to say that the Second Liberty Baptist Church is having a Martin Luther King celebration on Monday, and Reverend Hathaway is, is the speaker there. And I know they would love if you all came out to that. And everybody have a nice holiday and be safe. Thanks.
Ms. Steers?
Thank you, sir. I don't have any comments at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Firstly and foremostly, thank you, everybody that's here tonight, even the ones that don't like me. I'm excited to be here. I'm excited, you know, it's not lost on me what a great privilege it is to be here and represent the citizens of District Five. As someone like Mr. Evelyn that grew up here, it's just a great honor to represent those in the community that made me me. I see my childhood friends, parents, my own parents. And I promise, you know, that I will always be honest, full of integrity, transparency, and accountability. And the moment you think I'm not, call me on it. But thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. All right, staff reports, Mr. Hathaway?
The only report that I have is, we do have a Republican Presidential Primary coming up, March fifth, and as a result, early voting, and I'm looking at our registrar, will begin January eighteenth?
Nineteenth.
Early voting will begin January nineteenth at the Health and Human Services Building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Any other business that board has? Our next meeting, our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at six P M. on February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, and the next work session will be held at nine A M. on January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, both in the boardroom of the County Administration Building. If there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Ms. Stanger, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Adjourned, seven twenty-nine.